Order. Well, call is first. Board member Evans. Board member Manis. Here. Board member Soro is absent. Board member Smith is present. Board member Spencer.
Here.
Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we turn to our most important questions. Next item is adoption of the agenda. I move that we amend the agenda to add item three EE, emergency certification for high school FMD. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries. We got the agenda with the changes. Student recognitions. We've got FFA chapter.
Well, today we're here to present our goal check rating, which is the highest rating that you can get from the state or any state really. And what this is, is it rates our chapter as a whole out of three components. Student development, chapter development, and community development. Now, student development would be more like the competitions, like impromptu speaking, livestock judging, stuff like that, you know, just so you can get your ability to speak out to people and not be so shocked. And chapter development would be like fundraisers and the ability to raise money and work together in order to get things done. And community development would be interacting with communities, such as helping clean up, like we did after the tornado. We've done that a lot. And just volunteering for stuff, like we get at Mount Memory, selling flowers to people, and just giving back to the community because without the people in the community, we wouldn't have anything that we could present this again.
Congratulations, guys.
Before you leave, I would like to let you know that this does have a special place for me. Of course, this is my background. It's been 20 years ago now since I received my last one of those as a teacher. So I do want to commend you and I do know it's a lot of hard work and you all are a central part of this high school and this community. So thank you all very much. And I have high expectations from you this year and I wish you well in your upcoming speaking events and your farming procedure and your various SAE projects. So congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Pinkel, did you want to get a picture?
Mr. Hatfield or Ms. Brown, do you all have any speeches that you all would like to have or anything? Joe, any speeches that you or Ms. Brown would give, if you'd like to have?
Sir.
I would like to say thanks to Mr. Soro for being a great educator and making sure that we do what we need to do and put in complicity in us.
I'm gonna assume this is the officer team here?
This is three of the six. The only ones that can make it.
I think this is your president?
President.
Yes, sir.
Secretary.
Okay.
Treasurer.
Well, we expect the treasurer to have plenty of money then.
That's right. I hope so. I hope so. Twenty-five years before I can retire, I hope to have at least 25 of these on the wall by that time. So we'll see. We'll see how that goes.
And while I have high school students here, and I know you all are welcome to stay, but I'm gonna assume you're probably not going to. I do want to announce the new principal of the high school while the students are here. New principal of the high school is Mr. Wallace Bates. And I'd just like for him to commit. He probably already has, but just wanted to introduce you to him. You all have a great evening. Once again, you're welcome to stay, but... I expect if you come back about nine o'clock tonight, we may still be in here.
I looked at your agenda. It's pretty long.
We'll show you some tricks here in a few minutes, Mr. Soro. Because I don't intend on being here at nine o'clock tonight.
All right. Next is the values and beliefs. The vision for Menifee is we are Menifee, where students become college and career ready. And our mission is empowering future generations to be productive and successful in the global economy through community collaboration, creative thinking, and structural rigor and relevance in order to improve the quality of life. In our last meeting, we discussed the goals. So I'm gonna read the goals today. By 2020, all students will be graduate, college, and career ready for successful transition after high school. By May 2018, we will have a 96% attendance rate. By 2020, all students at end grades of three, five, and eight will have zero novice based on Thinklink data. By 2020, Menifee will be a top-10 district. And by 2022, Menifee will be a number-one district. So those are the goals we're shooting for. Next item is munis balance sheet.
And I do want to stress to board members that Mrs. Crowley was unable to attend this afternoon. And in July, she would like to get together an hour before the next board meeting to go over and finalize the goals and missions for the district. So if you would care, put on your calendar for whatever date that may be. An hour before the meeting, we'll have a working session before.
All right. You guys are pretty familiar with your balance sheets now. General fund, we have 1.5 million or almost 1.6 million.
And I got a little excited when I saw that.
Yeah, but you do have to remember, we've got four payrolls coming out this time. I think the extra two payrolls were each, they were 181, 181,000 each. So that'll be coming off there. Fund two is 131,000. District activity, which is mostly BOTS money, is 32,000. Capital outlay fund is the 31,000. This is what we have left over to do capital funds requests in the next year. If we want to put it on land or any kind of capital projects. The building fund 320 is a negative 39,855. You'll be getting your second portion of that this month to put that up into a positive number. Your fund 360, you have 151,000 still left out of that bonding capacity that we just did. Your debt service is zeroed out. So if it doesn't have an amount in it, it doesn't print. So this just shows you, the two amounts, the revenue and expenditure, just shows you what happened in that fund. So that's completely zeroed out. I hope you'd happen to be sure. All right. And food service is at a healthy 159,000.
Is that really good participation in the summer feeding program? Excellent, members of the district.
Do you know about how many meals they've been serving today? Have you heard?
I didn't ask you that. And I do want to stress to you on the munis balance sheet, she has caution to do that. Also, we will have two payrolls coming out of that, but it still does look that we will end with a little over a million dollars in our debt on money. And overall, 70-some thousand have been the revenue generated from the nickel tax. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the remainder of that money has increased our bonding capacity. So that is the little portion of where we came since we first started here. You've been very good stewards of the money.
Make a motion we approve the munis balance sheet. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries. Mentally financial report.
Okay. The things I want to highlight on this are on page five. You have your total revenue that you've got year-to-date. We're at 7.3 million. Last year, at this time, we were just at 7 million. So we have increased our revenues. A whole lot of that, we have, have we doubled our, from our nurses, the salary or the money we've increased from our nurses? Has it doubled almost?
Federal money we get paid?
Yeah.
Medicaid reimbursement. Really, she's fantastic job with Ms. Lane and Ms. Wade. Actually, enough that we're, you'll see on the agenda tonight, that we're creating another nursing position at the high school.
It's all about coding and billing to get out and back.
And we've been, they've really put out a lot of work this year. And the other thing I want to show you is on page nine. I went back through this month to any codes that were over budget on and updated everything, but we're still at a million-dollar contingency, which is right at 9%. So we are way above the 2% required. And we're at, on the expenditures year-to-date, we're at 5.7. We are, it was 5.7 last year. We're a little above that, but we still are keeping in track and staying on top of what we're shooting.
That's great, though. I mean, we've only spent, that's like $40,000, $43,000 more this year than last year, but we still have a million dollars in contingency and gonna end the year with a million, so.
Well, and we're fixing that.
Exactly. We've done a whole lot more things, I think, this year, but still, we've still come out really good. And Chromebooks and all the things that we purchased this year. The new cream pillows and stuff, so yeah. That's really good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries. Bank break.
All right. So on your bank break, if you'll notice on the right hand, is everything that we just talked about on the balance sheet. And you can see that it reconciles. The one adjustment that I had was just a journal date error. That's what happens sometimes. So you can tell that we didn't have any issues and our total reconciled balance in the bank is over 2 million dollars. I know that's something that excites you.
I make a motion we approve the bank reconciliation. All those in favor say aye. Any ayes? Motion carries. Cash flow statement.
Okay. You're looking at your cash flow statement. You can tell that all the amounts up to May have been updated with what's on our reconciled balance. And based on, and I've removed the bond funds so that you guys aren't seeing that in anything. And it looks, I'm projecting 1.5 in the million, 1.5 in the bank at the end of the year after we pay the double payroll, which would consist of about a million dollars in the general fund. Now, we have paid a lot of prepayables that are due July 1. We went ahead and did that, and that's about $100,000. So you will see some expenditures in your claims for that, like Odysseyware, PSST, our memberships, or KBS, and those kinds of things. So when the audit's done, we'll be adding, you know, you'll get that credit.
I make a motion we approve cash flow statement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries. Assessment report, mental report.
No, we're just really waiting for our test scores to come back. Our I-ready is on track to start in the fall. And we're being ready when we come back in July to put processes in place so that we can monitor those. And as you all know, we have a new assessment system. And I think I want to give it to them chunks, starting in August. It is supposed to be something I can explain to you in the line at Prover, but I don't think I should. So you all will get it in your cadre training, but I think it's something that we're gonna need to spend a little time just talking about, or maybe even do some emailing about, because it is a complicated complex system.
It's just the dashboard.
The dashboard approach, which now has some stars and all sorts of things, I think, so.
Like motel rating. It needs five star, four star, three star, two star, one star.
That was something that I think the state's more added, which adds a numerical component and whatnot. So it's just really a very, it's something I want to send you all, let your record head around a little, and then we can ask each other questions.
For those of you that received, you all received the KSBA in your emails. It was in that, I think, one day, like maybe either Monday or last Friday, one, I can't...
Don't read anything but that, because anything older than that will be wrong. It's changed that much. It's a, and it's still not set in some, but we do get this whole next year to kind of, I don't know, give it up, because we're kind of in a whole harmless pattern right now.
Attendance report and transportation report.
Okay. I'm not Tim Hacker, but... Of course, we don't have a attendance report. We haven't been in school. But I just want to report a little bit on the attendance for summer school. It was outstanding. We had so many kids in these buildings and it was just wonderful. I think after the summer, we saw a lot of things on Facebook, when are you gonna do this again? How do I get in? And I think the ACT camp was full with a waiting list. So a lot of good things went on here over the summer. I hope you all looked at our Facebook pages, all the STEAM and STEM pictures. There were just a lot of great things and we had a full house. Transportation, right now, he says he's got a pool. Of course, he's got all his drivers, we need to have them. He is working with some, a couple of people this summer, maybe because, you know, make sure we have some subs or some things, so things have changed. But that's where we stand on both of those things.
And I would like to piggyback on what she stated about the academies. Really, it started to think about driving the district forward as we moved forward with the district, about putting in robotics and STEAM. And we had 21 stand members yesterday was in training at Round County High School to start the process of implementing Google classrooms within the district. We'll also be thinking about, we'll come before the board, look at many parts of more of the Chromebooks, where we can actually start piloting some Google classrooms next year, where you're essentially looking at a paperless classroom. And we had really teachers that were excited about it. And I think some of them really left the training yesterday with newfound enthusiasm and started thinking about education in the 21st century to continue moving forward. So, but it really was encouraging yesterday to watch some teachers participating and excited about the next steps we're taking.
PDSA report and structural coordinator report.
Several of us attended the persistence of graduation conference today. Some of them were there last night. A really good conference gave us, it's not about, they don't give you a lot of ideas and things to do, but they steer your thinking in the direction of making sure that all of our students graduate ready to go. So I really appreciated some of the thought, because sometimes if you're not, especially dealing with high school, you forget that the whole way through, we're supposed to be having our eye on the pie in the sky. And a really good conference. PDSA. With Mr. Spencer?
Let me elaborate more on the persistence of graduation summit that we just left. The summit is really finding kind of more work with the district of looking to every, we're gonna start this motto, and Mr. Bates, you might want to, every kid matters and every minute, every hour, every period, we're gonna be looking about instructions of the kid. And that's gonna be a thing that I've asked Ms. Means and Mr. Bates and also Mr. McNabb. That's kind of gonna be our morning announcement, that we want everybody on task with the entire day in a caring environment with the kids here. And so it was really establishing relationships today is what a lot of the training was about. And good training, and I think we'll bring back some exciting ideas to start incorporating some of that.
And my statement at the beginning came from the thinking behind creating vision and mission. And we've done this. We were working on this 20 years ago, but we need to always come back and revisit that. And we, especially Mr. Spencer, he had a little bit better decision than I have, but some really good ideas about going back and thinking about what we want that to be, which we spent a lot of time working on that last year. When we met in our last PDSA meeting, Mr. Spencer was, we talked about the fact that we had completed a 240-day plan this time. And where we had started in the middle of the year, the very first time. We started a bit later in the year last year than we did this year. So we were really glad to see that we got to 240 days. We should have a management audit, and I think that's being cleared the spring of 2018. So we're thinking now that everything we do, we're gonna go back and look at those priorities and make sure that when we look at this PDSA and do our review, that we're linking everything back to those management priorities. Not because we just want a better score, but because we want to be better at everything we do.
What things are included in the management audit?
Pardon?
What things are included in the management audit?
Curriculum instruction. Everything that we're looking at here came about because of the first audit that we had. Now, this has evolved because, for example, curriculum instruction, the very first thing was making sure the standards, and this is from the audit, making sure that the standards get to the desk of every student. So that's very broad. But from that, we come up with all these different things. You can't do everything at one time. So you break it down into, first you have your goal, and then you break it down into these steps. Like, for example, this year, it's all been about revising our curriculum maps. We've had curriculum maps, but they've never, they've not been looked at every year to make sure that we are implementing these with fidelity as far as making sure the standard's being taught to the degree that it needs to be taught. We've revised our math in elementary three times now. And we're doing it again this summer because we have new math series. Where before we might have put that off, we're not gonna do that anymore. We've revised reading for our journey series. We've looked at high school because they changed their schedule. So we'll keep doing this, just like we might keep working on our vision and mission statements, because things change and we have to change too. So to make a long story short, everything that we talked about today is from the management audit, but it goes back maybe three years, if you want to see exactly. And you can come to board office, we can show you. It's, and it's on our website, yeah.
Yeah, because there was some immediate changes needed to be made.
Sure.
And then there was long-term changes, and you just had to get to the long-term change, but there's a lot of steps to get there, so.
Our focus on curriculum this next year will be common assessments. We've looked at curriculum, we've looked at it, we've looked at it, we will continue to do that. But then this next year, building common assessments will be our focus.
Sorry? Common assessments, means?
Okay. Across the district, so we have four first-grade classrooms. We want the kids to be assessed at BOTS. We want that assessment to look the same as it looks at Menifee Elementary. And we're hoping, across the state, this is happening. So truly, when a kid does come to us from another district or even another state that uses a common core, we want their instruction, their curriculum should look the same. Sorry.
So in other words, Mr. McNabb and both board members, my focus is if I walk into a classroom of second graders at BOTS Elementary, and then I go and visit Ms. Means in second grade, and I do it that same day, and they are covering a specific topic in a certain subject area, then they should be right on the same page. The pacing guides and everything should be on the same page. Because a lot of times, we would have students that would transfer between the two schools and it would be really difficult to get. And that's our goal.
Yes. A lot of these things are addressed in PLCs now, that and then all the way back to the original part of the audit. We've always had department meetings since, you know, 35,000 years ago when we started teaching. We had department meetings. But now, they're much more effective and efficient. We have goals. They have little mission, vision statements that they have, you know. And it's taken from the district but broken down to a school level. So just a lot more focused, with a lot more of knowing what we're looking for instead of just kind of shooting in the dark. Sorry. So in assessment, Ms. Hacker spoke to I-ready. That should be, that will be our district universal screener next year. We have training starting the 7th, maybe a day or two before we'll get administrators. In governance, we will continue with our liaison meetings. Every time that we have a meeting to discuss our meetings with the principals, we talk about how this is one of the most effective things that we feel like we're doing. It's efficient, it's effective, it's a communication between principals, district office, and then the principals to the superintendent. So it's like, one person doesn't have to do everything, but we can meet and discuss. They can let us know their needs. We can tell them what we expect from them. It's a monitoring piece. One of the best things that came out of that audit. We will review our certified evaluation plan, the state, it's in limbo right now, but we will continue to use the plan that we had this year, next year. Our site-based council, this is a change. Our site-based council bylaws and policies are gonna be sent to Natasha Napier at KDE for review this year. And we want to make sure that we are thoroughly documenting in our minutes what is occurring in a site-based council meeting. In finance, we have the tentative budget completed. We have case scale that has been updated. And student health, they have logged over $30,000 in billing this year. So that's really good to get reimbursed for services that we're providing. In facilities, a lot of projects over the summer. They got the high school steps completed, I believe, RFP for the construction manager. In transportation, ongoing bus driver recruitment, for all of you who can get out there and maybe recruit people. We do have all routes covered, but we always need setups. Tim has completed, Mr. Hacker has completed the SAR report. That's the superintendent report. That is what will determine how much money we get allocated next year. And I...
That is...
449.
Yeah, it's come down quite a bit. It's at 949, which is probably gonna be a pretty good hit on the budget. But we did get an at-risk number of increase, which should help alleviate some of that. But still, it will be probably a $40,000 to $50,000 loss of revenue for next year.
And is that on top of the ADAD increase, too? Is that on top of tolls?
I'll have to be aware, we'll have that reflection in our amended budget tonight, or as you're, within your amended budget on section 33. I'm sorry.
Yeah. We just might get words at this point. I know. And I agree. The numbers.
Best chance to be working.
For food and nutrition, we are feeding over 100 students a day in our, with our summer camps, with our universal feeding, with our summer feeding programs. And in technology, we have been attending Google training. We've all had phase three now. So our next step now is to create this plan for implementing Google apps in our classrooms.
And I'm just gonna make you aware, and I told the group that, that Mr. Bates just went and covered his ears or whatever he wants to do, it's gonna be in order. We are opening the internet of the teachers we've had. We shouldn't have to go through certain proxies to get into things, but we're gonna really take a look at that in the next little bit, and we're gonna move forward. So that's gonna be one of the things you'll see on the PDSA in July. It'll be something we're gonna take a look at. So he may want to close his ears, but I'm telling you...
I'll do it as much legally as we can.
He better get ready, because we're going to make sure that if I've got a teacher sitting in the classroom, they don't have to go look him up. It should be, have immediate access. And the role of technology is gonna start to look like the Google Chrome and the Google Classroom. He's gonna have more of a instructional component, and we'll have to pick up the other, the troubleshooting. He'll have to make some provisions in his staff, so.
Everything goes back to curriculum. Just let me say that. All lines lead back to instruction. So we are required to do a curriculum instruction report. This is a procedure. We're looking at possibly changing this. Normally, the principals would submit this, but we're kind of, they're very capable, it's not that. But a lot of this goes back to next, to what happened, occurred last year. So I'll just speak to that and then make you take over. So as I said before in the PDSA, this year, this school year ended with our completing our curriculum documents and making them accessible in OneDrive. The goal is to get them out there to where anyone can go to our website, say they want to come to Menifee County, they can pull up our curriculum. We have our elementarys available, but not the high school. But we do have the high, K through 12 now in OneDrive. Kelly and I have to do a little work on them as far as their placement. That's open to the whole district now, so that everyone can see what everyone else is doing. We feel like that's a, that's a big step right there. Our goal next year will be to have these revised in OneDrive on our website, just as accessible as they can possibly be. Organizing students for instruction, that's about RTI. We've presented on that in our PDSA. The big focus, and that was discussed today, is making sure that we have a time to complete RTI with our students. The homework policy, that's just part of, you read on your, the policy that I passed out for procedure, that's in there, and I just spoke to, each school has a responsibility of monitoring their homework policy, so. Assignment coordination of homework, that's number four. And then at the high school, this plan to monitor student progress. Of course, they have the MYAP, the MYAP, the way, is the way we refer to it. And that's students' plan for four years. We have the IOP, too, that starts at grade six. That goes all the way from sixth to 12. Not probably utilized as much as it should be, but it's probably an area we need to work on.
How could we work on improving our IOP?
Okay. We had a discussion about that in one of the meetings that we were in. We feel like maybe, starting at sixth grade, like when we have a back-to-school bash or when we have an open house, you know, when we did, those of you that were at the block party. I had a Title I station say if one was giving away free, I gave away all these free materials. I gave away tons of things. So once we go back and we look at that, we're thinking, we need to be, I need to be at an open house. I need to be, I will be at the back-to-school bash. I will be giving away, not as much as I probably did at the block party, but I will have resources there. Some things I can just get from the internet, like websites and links and things, places for parents to go to when they need help, even homework help. Resources. We've got to get those things out to parents. But we were thinking, when we had that discussion, that we could set up a table, computer, IOP, guidance counselor, and walk parents through, just like we walk them through getting into Infinite Campus and logging on to the parent portal. We've got some great ways to keep, for parents to monitor their kids. But sometimes, maybe, we forget that we need to constantly update our parents. New parents come in, we need to do it again. But we need to do that. Is that good? Was that good enough? Did that work?
I know one of Mr. Bates's focus, of course, coming from a high school background, is making sure that parents are informed, great, instead of waiting for the last, at the end of the six weeks or the nine weeks. And all of a sudden, you're, if you're like my phone, from my previous experience with... and all of a sudden, you're, if you're like my phone, from my previous experience with my children, is right before the grading period end, my phone would go off, boom, 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 I've got a bunch of grades in there for my kid. So one of his initiatives this year, and I'm also going to encourage the other two principals, is let's make sure that we're putting those grades in there, where we don't wait for the last moment, and then all of a sudden, if we've got a class that the student's not doing very well in, and then it would have been known two to three weeks ago, and they could have came in and made with the principal, made with the teacher, to get those things accomplished. So we're really wanting to increase the number of parents that have access to it from here. And so, we're really wanting to reach out to the parents and let them get involved with this case from here.
Student learning and support services, board minutes, we'll have to do these separately. May eighteenth, board minutes. I make a motion, we approve May eighteenth, board minutes. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries. June sixteenth. I make a motion, we approve June sixteenth, board minutes. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any objections? Motion carries. Subsequent claims, current claims, and bills and salaries.
Okay, so these should be pretty normal. Like I said, there are some prepayments that we've made, it's probably about a hundred thousand dollars, so I think, when he opens that and goes to the total. Wait, now this was an early month, so you don't see two of these, she was able to get all of them all at the same time. So, you don't have to, but, see if you can go to the end. You should have it on. Any ayes? No, that's five, go up, it's in one scanned document. I know, keep going. Those are your food service ones, so about twenty-five thousand is what they spend in food service. Two more, right there. So this is a hundred and fifty-nine thousand in your warrant total. So that's probably what we spent, a lot of that, we've done some Aussieware, CSST, KDC, and some things like that, and I'm waiting on some more for the end of the year. There wasn't anything unusual that's, that's happened lately. Of course, we, we have all the equipment in our kitchen, so we do have some freezer and refrigerator issues that we're going to have to address, and a lot of those from like July.
Any questions? I make a motion, we approve subsequent claims, current claims, salaries, and bills for payment. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries. Abolish instructional assistant position at Menifee County.
Once again, this is just another effort to look at the possibility of saving some money for the district. We're down to, I think, thirty-eight, forty-four students up there, we have two teachers up there, and we really, we can get by without the assistant there. So, that position's been abolished, and that person's been transferred to Menifee Elementary. That'll be a savings of about twelve to thirteen thousand for the district.
I make a motion to...
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries. Abolish assistant principal position at Menifee Elementary.
Through the collaboration with Menifee Elementary Site-Based Council, Mrs. Means, they did a little bit of reorganization with the staffing there, and they kind of changed the job description, the job title, the position that was created last month, of the academic instructional specialist. There is no longer a need for the assistant principal, because that person didn't fulfill some of those same roles. So, Ms. Means and the council has graciously decided to remove that as part of the rest of the allocation. As well, it still needs the needs of the students. Probably in a more efficient way.
I make a motion, we approve the abolishment of assistant principal position at Menifee Elementary. I'll say. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries.
On that note, and it may already be in your personnel notifications, but the academic instructional specialist was Phil, and that person is Jody Blackburn. Ms. Blackburn lives down in the Means area, has been working in several school districts. She's recently, she had worked previously at Menifee County, and previously had been employed with the Scott County School District. And she has her teacher degree certification, has worked with Kentucky Reading Project, and brings the wealth of knowledge to where she can go into classrooms and go through various instructional strategies, and coach our staff members as well, as provide assistance to Ms. Means within the central office. So, Ms. Blackburn done the fish that started July one, but I've been at the elementary school, and she's already volunteered several days already. So, we appreciate her services.
Kelly?
Here, please. My computer just decided it wanted to stop and update and turn off. Yeah, it just turned off and updated.
Did it pop up on the box?
No, it popped a big bit, just wait, okay. All right, we'll start to share, please. Next item is create elementary teaching position at BOSS.
Okay, Ms. McNabb has, we lost eighteen students to Menifee Elementary in fifth grade, or they'll be coming to sixth grade student. He has a fourth grade classroom that is going to where he had two teachers in there last year, he only had one fifth grade teacher. He also has twenty-six kindergarten students that are currently enrolled and anticipating for, and so, we're needing to fulfill that position, and Will has, it will help him with our direct explicit instruction to assist in providing a common plan in kind of BOSS Elementary, like we're doing at the other two schools. So, this is a need for the district, and once again, all the positions and all the abolishments, if we put one thing in mind, it's proven student achievement in the district.
I make a motion, we create an elementary teaching position for BOSS Elementary. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries. Create district-wide nursing position.
Through the work of our two school nurses, and well, as cooperation with Gateway, I guess it's the Gateway Health Area Council, we have seen a significant increase in the amount of money coming to the school district, and we feel that we do have a need of a school nurse here at the high school, as well as possibility of serving those kids in seven through twelve. That would let the school nursing at Menifee Elementary focus on the K six students in the BOSS Elementary, who would also be working with, with making sure all the paperwork and things are handled. So, we do have a need for another school nurse, and would be, it's basically, it's not costing the district any money at all, but really it will pay for itself.
I make a motion, add additional district staff, make some progression.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries. Create curriculum instructional coach position.
Kind of in, in lieu of trying to keep up with what's going on at Menifee Elementary and at BOSS Elementary, they have a guidance counseling position posted, but I think they're going to look at the possibility of that being more of working with Ms. McNabb, sort of ARC roles and more of administrative role there. We felt that there would probably be a need for a curriculum instructional coach with that, at the high school, as well as working some with the district. This person would also, in one of the job descriptions that you will approve in just a moment, other duties as assigned, which I think is number twenty-one, would also be working with, working with gifted and talented, and actually be a gifted and talented teacher. And that, with the retirement of the person that has been gifted last year, that was a need in the district. We can utilize some gifted and talented money to help offset the salary. So this person will be working with the high school for probably about eighty percent, and then twenty percent at the, at the elementary, and at the two elementary and middle schools. So, it's really not costing the district a whole lot more, and it's fulfilling a need. We kind of see this as three buckets, this person would kind of serve as a social wellbeing kind of facilitator for the high school, with the Wellness Coalition. They would also assist with developing a PLC, working with teachers, and, or doing teacher-driven PLCs, and also incorporating RTI strategies within the high school, to where we're focusing on tier-two and tier-three strategies. And the high school schedule next year will reflect an actual tier-two and tier-three classes, and our goal, and to move out of state management and to move into improving test scores, is you really want tier-one instruction with the tier-two embedded within those classes. So, that would be that person's role, and each one that was needed within the district. So it's really, it's, you go about four buckets, and it will help fill.
I'll say, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries. amended working budget. Oh, no, sorry, job description, job description for the instructional coach.
This is something that I looked at, I work with the ER staff, we utilize other districts, but it's something that is very strenuous. I think there's about twenty-one different threads on this, and this person will be busy, so all I think they've got those buckets to fill.
I make a motion to approve the job description for the curriculum instructional coach.
Now, I will come back and tell you, as state manager, of course, sometimes the state manager, and I spoke with the board chairman, that we have the authority, the board is advisory role, and we'd actually interviewed for some positions within the district about a week ago. And we actually went through the process, and we have filled the curriculum academic coach position with the internal transfer. And I'll introduce that person, she's here in attendance tonight, and that's Ms. Lana Schwartz. So, Ms. Schwartz will be working in that role. She's also going back and will be completing some coursework at Georgetown College, I believe, working on completing her gifted and talented certification. And we're just excited that with Mr. McNabb, he had the robotics program going on at BOSS, and then we had the STEM camp, and a variety of things with drum projects here at the high school with Mr. Olinsky. I just see this really being an enhancement for the district. And one of the reasons of the quick move, with Ms. Schwartz being a science teacher, and science teachers are extremely, it's a critical shortage area for the district, and you will see further on your, on your agenda. Menifee County, we will, will be working, and we'll talk to the board in a few moments about participating in the Teach for America program. And the high school council has already interviewed a lady for the science position, and they've extended the offer to, to have a replacement for Ms. Schwartz. And the reason for the quick turnaround was of last Monday, there were nineteen candidates in that Teach for America program in science. Due to the high demand and the critical shortage, they were down to two candidates on Monday of this week. So that's the reason that we had the quick turnaround. Now, does that mean that we ended up getting the lower candidates of, of the nineteen? No, it means that they fulfilled a need within other districts that they wanted, and we feel like that the high school council made the excellent decision with their decision. So, we're excited about those. All right.
They're funny. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries. amended working budget.
All right, so on this working budget, the only things that we've really done is I went through line by line to make sure we weren't over on anything, and we've added the three twenty BS, the novice redemption grant. And that had to be approved in here, it's under front two. And there were a few other small things, but that's...
The authority of the amended working budget, I just want to recognize when we have our audit, we make it blow with it.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve the amended working budget. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries.
amended pay scales. All right. So what we had to do...
And I do want to stress to you on this amended pay scale, we'll probably be going through this and maybe making some more additions next year as we go through. We really need to start looking at, at the competitiveness of salaries within, from the top down, from the central office down through instructional assistants or cook's bus driver, of making sure that we're on a competitive basis, for where we can attract quality candidates to Menifee County. So, we have made some changes this time, and we probably anticipate some changes here in the next following, to the eighteen, nineteen school groups.
A lot of the changes on, is that... Where's that for my eyes on? Okay, I'm just going to take the... Really what happened? Uh, you can start with that. Really, the only adjustments that you're looking at is the things for these new positions. Taking out the old positions, adding the new positions, um...
We kind of wanted the changes, thanks for bringing it up.
I tried to do that for you, sometimes I miss some, but that actually was the vice principal, and all of those just things around. So that's fair, there was the extra search days, we were changing codes, we had a ghost speaker on that. That's the only one on that, Kelly, go to the next one. Oh, yeah, this one, it was a joint decision, we met with the nurses. Um, we had a meeting with the nurses, and we all decided that the CNA portion was not necessarily the number of the nurses we had working in. So, the first one, along with the A, we didn't pay for the lock, but somebody was offering the skills. So we put those down to the I. And then that's all the change on that one, and I took out those pay scales, those levels, and the above. And then on the last one, the extended days, changed the number to D. And we just created the specials and the coach.
Misses days onto the principal.
Yeah.
Once again, I'm not through with this, because I want to start making adjustments to this, so, we'll be, probably will be taking another look at this.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's just like a budget. It's our first step, we're trying to get some quality in there, and getting those percentages in there to where that makes sense. And then, I want to make this more of what we need, and as long as we're doing it.
And what's kind of looking, when I say we're going to be taking another look at this, I mean essentially after tonight or tomorrow, the central office will be essentially, with the exception of myself and a couple others, will be making, so, those are the things we'll be taking a look at. We're planning work to do.
I make a motion to approve the minimum pay scales. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? I don't know if you can get this... District tournament.
All right, so every year we have districts, I'm going to have to put this on our pay scale, I haven't done it this time, but I figure it's going to be needed again, so I'll be at the end. We have district tournaments every year. The district tournament, the people get together and may decide from the district earnings, somebody's going to get paid something. It's the same thing we had before when we did the basketball. So I've added the minutes showing that that was their approval to pay for the district tournament coordinating, two hundred dollars. It's, it's down at the end, I'm pretty sure, right there. So, there's your evidence that they passed it to show you, and that's what you guys to approve it for paying. But apparently, we have at least one district tournament every year, so we will continue doing this until I can get it on there.
I make a motion to approve district tournament, pay two hundred dollars for the sixty-first district place call tournament. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries. Commit treasurer to issue check and payout prior to June thirtieth.
All right, you guys know June thirtieth is our end of the year. I'm trying to have all of our invoices in, and with our four meeting on the fifteenth, we've still got fifteen more days to get invoices in. All these bills need to be paid by June thirtieth, or it causes me a lot of drama. Sorry, I've been with drama all time, it's not a deal. But, we'll have April come down, she'll go through all the bills, she'll review them before anything's done, and if there's a question, we'll hold it back.
It's just so that the audit, or the financials more accurately depict what we did this year, or when we have the audit. And say, yes, we incurred this expense this year, and yes, we paid it this year, that's, that amounts to. You don't want too many corrections if you don't have it for the next year, so. And that's what we did last year, I know you can remember, that's what we did last year, if I look down and review it.
Well, and most places do that, even counties and, you know, schools, they'll, you have a special meeting on the thirtieth, or, or they'll do it this way. But all these will...
But all these were presented to the board in a warrant for you in July, so you just forget to see them.
I make a motion, we permit treasurer to issue checks for payouts for bills prior to June thirty. That's true. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any ayes? Motion carries. All end-up deposit forty.
So I was reviewing this, because we approved our, our bank stuff last, last year, but when I was looking at it, I don't know if you guys noticed, but our money in the banks went up. Yeah. So we actually really needed to update this, so right now, our money in the bank is two point four million, so what they do is, they ensure our bank balance, so that we're covered at a hundred and three percent. So I wanted to bring this back to you, so you guys can see this and reapprove, because I'm ready.
Well, it's due to money, we're supposed to make sure it's protected, but I got one of these as well, and all of this. I make a motion to approve the bond of the deposit for next year. Awesome. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any ayes? Motion carries. Operation make its agreement between Menifee Elementary Schools and Landon Monday.
Okay, this is something I'm working on, we really need...
This is something that we're, as far as Mr. Monday's been working with the county and the city on the waste management plan, we had put in about seventy-four, seventy-five thousand dollars into that waste management plan at Box, we were still getting readings that were not where we wanted them to be, and at the point of risking fines by the EPA and so forth, I decided to go in a different direction and move forward with the waste management plan. And there's very few of these folks out there.
So we're putting all the responsibilities on Mr. Monday at this point?
Yes. Well, if you occur any kind of, notice the violations with Division Order of the EPA, you can be...
It comes back on, it comes back on his certificate.
Yeah.
So it kind of takes some reliability off the district, and plus also helps ease, to where we can have more focus with our custodial staff and so forth. So, not a punishment, it's just a matter of doing some reorganization.
And the smell is already approved.